Six o'clock to our regular meeting of the City of Del Rayo City Council. Today's Tuesday, May 28th, six o'clock, and we're here in Charlie Benson Memorial Hall. Kim, can you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Gagliotti.
Here.
Councilmember Lintell.
Here.
Councilmember Getzel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Mayor Kerr. Here. I'm sorry.
Speaking to the light.
Oh, thank you. Kim, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Reverend Hallen.
Almighty God, please bless every person here with wisdom, courage, kindness, and honesty, so that all discussion will be truthful and courteous and productive, and so that all decisions will be well-founded. And thank you for your presence here with us this evening. Amen.
Thank you, sir. So, we want to open it for public comments. I want to remind everyone that this is addressing matters not appearing on the agenda. You have three minutes, and the floor is open.
Hi, it's Kim Shirley, Baxter Place. I have a couple of thanks. The first one, I think, goes to Ron. My husband had put in a request to cut down the Bride and Madeira plant that was on Canyon Del Rey, so when we came out of Canyon, and like within a day or so, it was cut down, and it really increased our visibility, so thank you very much for that. The other thanks is to the council and to Dino for our new roads. Thank you so much. Woo-hoo! They are a pleasure to drive on, and I'm a runner, and I run usually early in the morning, and I knew every crack and crevice on all of those cul-de-sacs, and now I feel like it's even safer for me when I'm out on the road, so I really wanted to thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Vander Swann. I'm on Carlton Drive, and I just want to follow up on what she said about the work that the city has done with regards to the roads out here. It was an impressive project. We heard the earth rumble for a whole week, but it was kind of comforting noise, in a way, and it commended to the construction company and the contractors that did the work. They did the best they could on the environment, even in light of the fact that it even rained on them, they managed to get the job done. And then my wife and I got on the bikes the other day and went, and we checked out all those cul-de-sacs, and they were just beautiful, because it was a risk to life at limb just to get in and out of those. So commend you for doing that. And also, on another subject, we live on Carlton where there was a modification made some years ago that was not really satisfactory. The speed control issue has helped a lot. We now have the speed warning signs, and we're seeing more from the police department making, reminding people to slow down a little bit. We hope that at some point, we can also use some of that material to get rid of those silly bumpers that seem to confuse everybody. A lot of our vendors, the postmen, and the trash people and all that, we're putting our trash out in the middle of the street. The bike lane there is virtually useless. The buffer zone is difficult to walk on and is hazardous, because you're right in the gutter, so we hope at some point the city will see its way clear to remove those bumpers and re-stride that lane and put it back in the middle to make the neighborhood. With that also, we have some concern about the pending plans, and I know it's still in the long-term process with the Fortag project, but we are a little bit concerned about inviting people to come marching up and down the streets, parking on our streets, staying for too long, doing a long bike ride all day long, and possibly compromising what is a nature preserve in the frog pond. We don't think that's a good idea. I think that's setting the city up for a big fall. I think that would encroach people to come in there all hours of the day and night, and that means that's more burden for the police to have to start following people up in the frog pond and where they're going up and down other parts of the neighborhood. That access, I think, should not be quite wide open. I don't think you'd want that in your neighborhood, or your neighborhood, or your neighborhood. There's plenty of room in four-door and along the coast here for bike riding and hiking. I don't think it needs to come into a residential area, and I'm very emphatic about that. The biggest fear of that is somebody sometime on a nice August or September day when we have an offshore flow comes in there with a cigarette butt or starts a fire at night, and that could literally burn this whole town down. And that's something I don't want to see. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hi, my name is Ruth Ann. I live on Carlton Drive, and I'm going to keep bringing up the issue. We have a residential street out in front of us, and I now want to call it a highway. We have numerous trucks, big trucks, we have speeding, and if you think that sign, it must help some people, but the sign that we're supposed to slow down, they speed right in front of eight Carlton Drive, and ten Carlton Drive, and six Carlton Drive to get up the hill. And then if I was smart and wanted to break the law, I would slow down too before the sign. Now, I've heard that the traffic has slowed, but if you're counting when they slow down by the warning sign, that is unfair. And I really, they're tearing up our road. There's a white pickup that I think somebody ought to look into that speeds up our street. Now, I'm sure they slow down before they get to the slowdown sign, but I don't call our street residential anymore. I call it a highway. We've got all kinds of traffic. Now, I know we've lived there for almost 50 years, so we have seen a difference, but we have traffic that is, should not be there, and speeding. Now, most of it is going up the hill, because you're going up the hill. Now, I would appreciate if somebody on this council would take charge and take care of it. That is my say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments about anything not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Public comments are closed. Do you want to start, or shall I?
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Under proclamations, we begin with National Public Works Week recognition, and, Kim, if you'll fire up that projector for me. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight a few of the many accomplishments that our small but very capable public works staff accomplished. As many of you know, most of our services here at the city are contracted, and that is also true of our city engineer services. So our city engineer is Sherman Lowe. Sherman, where are you? Right there. Sherman's been with the city for a very long time. His firm's been with the city for longer than that, and we've talked over the last few years about how it's been very, very rewarding to be able to actually make some physical improvements to the city. And Ron, where are you? Ron back there has started with us as a contract employee and then transitioned to a full-time employee, and I think anyone that knows Ron and his work will agree that he does the work of several men and women every day for our city. And so, as you look at some of these accomplishments, some of the things you don't see are Ron and with the help of our PD out there on the four-door property cleaning up some very hazardous homeless encampments, full of hypodermic needles, makeshift stoves, to Mr. Vander Swann's point about fire danger, and other hazardous material and health hazards, and they get it done, they keep our city clean and safe. The small jobs throughout the city. If there's a pothole on your street, it's not a small job. It's important. And Ron gets to it with cold mix when we have to, hot mix when we have it, fixing embankments that are eroding, fixing our barbecue pits when they've been put after years of use, they've become unable to hoist up and down and use and enjoy. City beautification and maintenance. I don't think I've ever seen more wood chips anywhere on the planet than I have in the city of Del Rayo. But as we pointed out today, we went to lunch for birthday lunch with Kim today, and Seaside's, you said we're going to do that later? Yeah, absolutely. Seaside's caught on to us, and they're starting to use wood chips in the Grand A Park. But this is just a small example of what Ron does every, every day. Broken pipes, this pipe burst that runs from City Hall down to our well and ate away a good portion of the hillside. Ron fixed it, good as new. And then our larger projects, and this is really where Sherman comes in. This is our most recent project, and thank you so much for those kind words regarding our public works effort. Very, very appreciated. You know, this was the largest public works project in the history of the city, and it was very, very capably designed and then overseen by Sherman Lowe, our city engineer, working hand-in-hand with Ron, our public works supervisor, just making sure that everything was being done, that i's were being dotted and t's were being crossed. And of course, we were very fortunate to have a superb contractor in this case. Tyker Construction did great work, and they did it at an amazing cost to the city. And again, that goes back to Sherman's bid documents, his design documents, and the timing of going out for that. So this is just a small, small bit of what these guys do every day. A lot of it frankly goes unnoticed, because it's either under the street or out of sight, but it's super-important work. So at this point, before the mayor reads the proclamation, we have Brian McMinn here, who's the Public Works Director of the City of Marina and represents the Regional Public Works Association. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Brian McMinn. I'm here in the capacity as the Vice President for the Monterey Bay Chapter of American Public Works Association, and just wanted to recognize, thank you for recognizing the role of public works in your community. A lot of great things going on, and more importantly, recognizing the employees that fulfill that role. A lot of times in smaller agencies in the day-to-day, some of that stuff can be forgotten and followed by the wayside, but you are to be commended for taking time out and recognizing this. And you're in good company this year between the three counties of Santa Cruz, San Benito, and Monterey that the chapter represents. There were 21 agencies that made proclamations this year recommending public works, so thank you for joining them.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I call Ron and Shirley?
I just want to read our proclamation. Recognition of National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, 2019. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of this community. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals from state and local units of government and the private sector who are responsible for the operations and maintenance of our public buildings, parks, greenways, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in California to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public work and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the city has one full-time public works employee, Ron Gucci Jr., who works tirelessly to keep our city attractive and working well by maintaining the streets, greenways, parks, buildings, storm drains, and other infrastructure, as well as keeping city equipment well-maintained and ready to go wherever needed. Whereas the contract city engineer, Sherman Lowe, has worked tirelessly to design, bid, and supervise construction of numerous significant public works week projects that improve the quality of life of our residents, businesses, and visitors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Allison Kerr, Mayor of Del Rayo, do hereby proclaim the week May 19 through 25, 2019 as National Public Works Week, and I urge all of our citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association and the City of Del Rayo in paying tribute to our public work professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. (applause)
Oh, there it goes. That is my.
Thank you, Sherman.
Thanks, Brooke. Thank you, Sherman.
We also have another very important proclamation, Recognizing Teachers Appreciation Week. Proclamation celebrating Teachers Appreciation Week, May 6 through 10, 2019. Whereas teachers make all schools great, and whereas teachers work to open student minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation of good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now here, therefore, I, Mayor Allison Kerr, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Del Rayo, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 10, 2019 as Teacher Appreciation Week. I urge all citizens to observe this week by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. I just want to have a show of hands of anyone in the city, or in the room that are teachers or have been teachers. Thank you for your service.[1022.12][1022.12](applause) We ask the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District to have someone come and accept, but they're having a council meeting right up the street. So they're working at it. All right, staff reports. Turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report includes a little bit of elaboration on the street project that's been mentioned tonight. We're about 99 percent complete with a terrific project on all of the cul-de-sacs, as well as Salsito and Carlton. There's a little bit of planting that is being done. I'm not sure if that's done yet, but will be soon. At the end of Tweed, if you go to the end of Tweed, if you haven't seen it yet, we've replaced the very industrial K-rail cement barrier at the end of that street with a curved oval in which we are planting trees that will essentially turn that into a cul-de-sac and make that appear far more livable and neighborhood-like than industrial. We did that in close collaboration with a resident there that gave up three feet of his driveway to allow that curving to be put in. I appreciate that very much. Public Works continues to beautify our parks. Ron's been down busy at the park, working on our volleyball field, our basketball court, and our baseball field. We've been able to shift our focus now to really kind of working on those ball fields, as well as improving the safety of the playground for our children by reinforcing some of the retaining walls around the playground areas, and working on some of the landscaping around Old Town Hall. So again, all being done with our one public works staff, so appreciate that. Our police department received an electrical vehicle ATV. It's parked in the building behind City Hall here, and Chief and I have been around for a ride in it.[1150.01][1150.01](laughter) That's not how this happened, but it's the work of Sergeant Nguyen, who put in an Air District grant and won the funding for that vehicle. We'll be outfitting it with lights and signals and so on to make it clear that it's a police vehicle, and that it'll be used to patrol our four-door property. And it is completely silent, as most electrical vehicles are, so. Our police department assisted last week in a fatal shooting in Seaside, and tragic fatal shooting in Seaside, and the chief of police of Seaside wrote to me and to Chief, and I've shared it with the council, but just want to share it with you, highlighting that he had heard from numerous officers and residents in Seaside about the professionalism of the Del Rayo Police Department and backing up Seaside on that tough, tough day. Staff mailed notices for a public hearing and a workshop that will be on our housing element, scheduled for June 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in Chambers. At this workshop, council will receive and discuss background information regarding the city's upcoming 2019 housing element update, including the new state laws that impact the housing element, as well as our regional housing needs assessment plan. So it's an important and long-overdue update to our housing element that will begin with that workshop on June 6th. Please attend if you can. We're updating our city website. We got a consultant on board, and they asked us what I liked about the current website. I said nothing.[1256.51][1256.51](laughter) It's true. So we're moving forward with the redesign of a terrific, contemporary, highly-searchable website. And Kim is the lead, working with Karen very closely with the consultant on the color palette, on the design, on the content, and we plan to roll that out in August. Hopefully you read the press release that Chief Hoin authorized. It concerned the arrest of one criminal wanted for burglary in our city, and the issuance of several warrants for several others. That hard work, that hard police work, was a direct result of Chief Hoin's leadership, Sergeant Guzman and Commander Berkwyn's hard work, and our officers being able to do the type of hard follow-up investigative police work necessary to solve crimes like that. For decades, for most of the existence of this city, we've been hard-pressed just to police our streets in the here and now, much less do thorough follow-up investigative work, and so I hope you read that press release. It's terrific and hard work done by our PD.[1340.01][1340.01](applause) We transferred $1,685,000 from our general fund into an interest-bearing LEAF account, which is a very safe but interest-bearing account that will generate, for the first time, approximately $41,000 in interest over the next year for this city. So it's testament to this council's hard decision-making and that we've gone, we're starting to move from a point where we're paying people interest on loans, to a point where we're making interest on money that we've built up and that we can save for a rainy day. That's our contingency fund, and then some. So that's a terrific kudos to the council on that. We continue to discuss our FORA loan with FORA to renegotiate the interest rate, and we've submitted a revised proposal to the FORA board. Should they approve it, which requires board approval by the FORA board, the council, the city, will save several hundred thousand dollars in interest and be able to pay off that loan by the time FORA sunsets. Staff discussed with Denise Duffy the way forward with the Del Rayo Garden Center project proposed by Mr. Moore at last month's city council meeting. We plan to get the staff together to continue to move forward on that process. We're very early in the project development, but we're very excited as well. We are in the process of doing what's called a cost-based readjustment for trash hauling The Waste Management District, on behalf of all of the cities served by Green Waste, is doing this cost-based readjustment to see what the prices should be. That was triggered by several cities, and we're all going to be the beneficiaries of it. The data for that has to come from Green Waste. There were several tries at that before the consultant was satisfied that the data was accurate, and now they're going through the review, and what we hope to do is bring to the June council meeting our anticipated revised trash rates. And finally, for the part-time, 20-hour-a-week administrative assistant position the council approved, we received 14 applicants, and Kim and Karen have gone through and winnowed out the top five. We're going through interview process and look forward to having a new team member on the team after July 1st. Madam Mayor, concludes my report.
Great. Mr. Gagliotti?
So, I'll start with Monterey One. So on Monterey One, I'm actually on one board and two committees, so attended two, one board meeting, a recycled water committee and budget committee meetings. At the April board meeting, on consent, we approved expenditures for the kickoff to the public water, sorry, Pure Water Monterey Expansion Backup Plan, which was, I spoke about last time, for just under $200,000, and that included engineering and design tasks, secret administration studies, legal counsel, and project management tasks. The key takeaway from that is that from that expenditure, the NOP, the Notice of Preparation, is going out to the public, and actually, it's already been released. And the public meeting, which I encourage all of us to attend, is at the Oldemire Center next Wednesday, June 5th, at 5:30, and that's where the expansion will be discussed, and they'll be taking public comment. So that's that. On the actions of the board, it was largely administrative and maintenance-related. On the budget committee, on May 10th, there was, was it, there's a preliminary status for the preparation for materials for the budget retreat. They're putting, we're all in budget kind of work right now, and so Monterey One is putting their budget together, they're having their budget retreat this Monday on June 3rd, and so the budget committee meeting was largely just the preps of those materials. One important note that came out in the budget meeting is that because we are in the push to get the initial Pure Water Monterey project online, cash flows tight. We're continuously at a reserve limit and will be until COD, which is commercial operations date. And that shows up in, actually, in the board minutes, as well as the budget meetings and recycled meetings. It's a message that's sent through throughout. On the recycled water committee, which I find is one of the best board meetings of the month, it's very technical, it's a bunch of engineers discussing very difficult problems and how they solve them. If you ever want to see government working, it's a great place to kind of sit in there. Last month, I reported that Pure Water Monterey COD will be pushed to Q4, and that was largely due to weather. That's still the new schedule, but crews are looking for parts of the schedule to trim, but we're still setting that schedule for Q4, for when we'll actually go online with the Pure Water Monterey, and that's the initial 3,500 acre feet of water. Paul Shudo, who's the executive director of Monterey One, attended the National Recycled Water Conference in Sacramento, and was pleasantly surprised to hear the governor was touting some of the accolades of the Pure Water Monterey project and to other senior national electeds, which was kind of, it was interesting, because Paul's never talked to the governor about it. It prompted Mike McCullough, who's the Monterey One Government Affairs Administrator, to start lobbying the governor to get him to attend the ribbon-cutting, which we're getting later this year, so stay tuned on that. I attended the California Flat Solar Project ribbon-cutting last Thursday, and so Councilman Getzel attended the board meeting, and if you would on your, if you could report out, we're on the site to do it right now, but.
Yeah, I can do it now.
Well, I'll just finish up here, and then we can hear your report on that. The Seaside Basin Water Master Board is, I still have yet to attend one meeting. It was canceled again. But they, I haven't seen actually the cancellation notice yet, so that's encouraging, and I will be anxiously awaiting to finally attend one of those. If it does happen, will be next Wednesday on the 5th. FORA, so FORA was very, very exciting. We had a huge week for Del Rayo. There were two meetings on the 8th and on the 10th. There was a special meeting held, and then there was a regular board meeting two days later following, basically to take action on what would happen in the special board meeting. In the special board meeting, for the first time in 10 years, the Administrative Committee, which is made up of all of the project managers and their, or sorry, city managers and their equivalent, in all the landed jurisdictions, met for the first time, I guess, in a decade with the. with the, in open session with the executive committee, or not the executive, but the directors, the board of directors. The Administrative Committee is, they are the doers. I mean, they flesh out infrastructure and CIP requests, and CIP is the, it's the heart of FORA. It's the distribution of all the funds that are collected that then go out to all the capital improvement projects. The Administrative Committee, the city managers and the like, essentially put that together. They determine what studies need to be conducted, and more importantly, they talk amongst the jurisdictions more freely, city managers to city managers, which is often, well, it is, it's often better than when the electeds are talking. So to have those two bodies, the Administrative Committee and the Executive Committee together, provided for what I would say is one of the most efficient meetings that I've ever seen at FORA. And it was remarked, a lot of people remarked on that. It turns out that FORA actually used to use that format 10 years ago, and they, for whatever reason, they quit doing it. But what was really nice was just, it was happening, you know, right there to just, to in real time, you know, take the context of the administrative staff reports, which is what we were all basically there to hash out, and understand kind of what the sentiment was, again, in real time. And because of that, that more efficient board process, the outcome was extremely beneficial for Delray Oaks. So with the sunsetting of FORA, there's a crystallization, basically, of all the landed jurisdictions, of their priorities, because there's no more time, there's no more money, and we basically have to put in what it is we want, the jurisdictions, to get done in that reasonable amount of time. And so the asks of the landowners, they have to be quantified, they have to fit within the current CIP process, and that's it. I mean, there's just, there's no going forward. So there may be one more bite at the apple if SB 189 passes, but right now, none of us are, we're not counting on that. We're basically all planning for the CIP process to be once. So what that means for Delray Oaks is that, that means getting all of, all of the South Boundary Road development, all the way through fully stamped building documents, which is about $400,000 to date, has been expended on that, getting the SEQA process and the environmental documents accepted for South Boundary Road, which is probably about another three or $400,000 that's been put in that, getting bids to contractors accepted and selected, which is about a $25,000 process, and then getting a contractor selected. All of that is monies that FORA is spending to basically put this package, or put the project basically a bow around it, and then ultimately hand it to us, to Delray Oaks. And then you need funding. And the road is going to be, the road cost is about $7 to $9 million. So out of that special meeting, the FORA staff was given direction to agendize the following. And it was one to accept the CIP for 2019, 2020 CIP, which earmarked $5 million for South Boundary Road, and $1.1 million for the Roundabout, which is the intersection between General Jim and South Boundary Road intersection. And then to authorize staff to just not only set that money aside, but then to take it and put it in a bank. And you can kind of guess where that agendized item came from out of the admin committee. They, I mean, these were Dino's basically terms. He got the admin committee to agree to this, put it in the staff report, and then bring it to us. So at the board meeting, that was, we talked about that. It was somewhat expected that there might be an attempt to kind of condition the action ultimately to accept, one, getting, taking $6 million, just under $7 million, and then putting it into, into an account. There was an attempt to basically condition that, that later, in the next year or so, if the board so desired, they could then vote and claw that money back. Alan Hoffa, to his credit, who I sit next to, he's from Monterey, he was not having any of that. And what could only be best described as, I would just say, kind of a mastery of parliamentary tactics. He diffused that whole bomb and basically brought the entire FORA board, you know, kind of back off that ledge, and got all of us, he brought the vote to her, I seconded, and then it was unanimously approved. And just like that, Delray Oaks now has $7 million literally sitting in the bank. So that was absolutely an incredible day. And then that added to, there's $1.2 million that are committed to Delray Oaks, those two projects, in the 18 and 19. So in one day, we basically now have about $9 million. And it's literally on, I mean, and that's largely due to your efforts. So thank you so much on that. The California Flat Solar Project, I didn't go to the water board meeting because I was attending the ribbon-cutting there. It's the largest utility-scale solar project in Monterey County. It's 280 megawatts AC. It's over 2 million American-made panels were deployed. Over 1,100 jobs in the county during the three and a half years of construction were there. The environmental benefits are annually, it offsets 110,000 metric tons of CO2. It's the equivalent of taking 75,000 cars off the road every single year. 280 megawatts, to put that in context, would supply in California during peak hours 112,000 homes. And as the physics works out, that would be split between Monterey County and San Luis fiscal customers. 130 megawatts of the plant is dedicated to the Apple H2 headquarters, which is the Apple Ring. And that was $185 million PPA. It was the largest, I believe it still is, the largest private nonutility purchase of solar power in the industry. And that happened, that's our project right here in Monterey County. 6,000 acres of permanent habitat was set aside for California tiger salamander, red-legged frogs, San Joaquin kit fox, golden and bald eagle, and also the largest known cropping of navarisha in the state. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Getzel?
Good evening. I attended the 23 May Pure Water Monterey, Monterey One Water, since they keep changing their name, Monterey One Water Board Meeting. Most of it was administrative. The board did approve a $1 million supplemental to the ongoing contract for the recyclable water facility. It sounds like it's a lot, but it's a $50 million project. This is only the third increase above and beyond the contracted price, so they're well within the normal 10%. That's generally acceptable in contracting as an overage. So they're well within their budget. Concerning that, they've had no safety issues with the project. Money continues to flow in. 84% of the pump station work is completed. They're working on the pump station for the Blanco Road Reclamation Ditch. It's almost ready to go. They're getting bids for the Slima Storm Water Pump Station. Bids have come in within the grants that they've received, so that's good news. Concerning the actual filtration and cleaning, water cleaning facilities, that's 89% complete. The injection wells are over 70% complete. And as John mentioned, they have started the expansion supplemental EIR and are starting to get public input on that. And that is the meetings I went to because I was out of country.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lintel?
Thank you. I attended the prayer celebration day out here at the flagpole. Pastor Bob conducts that every year, and each year, there seems to be more and more in attendance, and I hope next year it increases again. I also attended Earth Day at the Seaside City Hall. There were many interesting booths to visit, including one from Delray Oaks, which was manned by our mayor, and I'm sure she will be happy to talk all about that. And MST, as alternate, I attended the MST board meeting, where Sherman Upshaw was recognized as Employee of the Month for May. And there was an excellent presentation made by Lisa Reinheimer, who is the Director of Planning and Marketing for MST, after which the board approved the Integrated Marketing and Communications Plan, which she had presented. Also approved was Emergency Financing Plan with Wells Fargo Bank for five replacement trolley vehicles, and the amount of $2 million for approximately 24 months. This is due to the non-delivery of federal capital grant and State of California bond funds until the amalgamated Transit Union, ATU, objection has been resolved by the Department of Labor. AMBAG, as alternate, I attended the AMBAG board meeting, where we approved the draft fiscal year 2019-20 Monterey Bay Region overhaul work program, OWP, and budget. Received a presentation on employee-funded Aflac for the employees of AMBAG, and it will be a nice benefit for them, and it will be funded, employee-funded. Also, we received the financial update report, which provides an update of the current financial position. Currently, AMBAG has sufficient assets on hand to pay all known current obligations. Seaside sanitation. I attended the Seaside Sanitation Board Meeting, where we amended the construction contract agreement with SAN Act for $32,008 for the sewer cleaning and video inspection project on Highway 1. This was necessary because of the waste-contained lead, and thus required a hazardous waste materials disposal, which had not been figured into it. And that was, the lead in the waste materials was due to the unloaded gas many years ago, where it was just all filtered into the system, and then also paint. Community Human Resources, the regular board meeting was postponed until May 30th, at which time we will hold our annual strategic planning retreat. However, I did attend the graduation ceremony for Genesis House, which is one of the facilities operated by Community Human Services. There were 77 graduates who had, Genesis House is for adult drug and alcohol recuperative folks, and like I say, there were 77. Many were sober, whatever, for different timeframes, some for months, some for many, many years. It was very impressive to see so many of varying ages turn their lives around, from drugs and alcohol to lives of being productive citizens. They are really to be commended for that. I know it has to be extremely difficult. Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group. I attended the ice cream social. Kim Shirley did an outstanding job in organizing the event, and as well as her helpers were they all there on Sunday morning. And our city manager, Dino, served ice cream with his left hand. He gave good scoops, though. And Officer Ken Bowe of our police department also served ice cream. Ken also made a generous donation to CAG. David Kimball and George Jacksaw, as usual, displayed the signs for the event. And there were many other helpers, and thanks to all for a great job. For the second year in a row, the weather did not cooperate with this. Whether it be rain or wind and cold weather, no sunshine. Anyway, there were lots of toppings and ice creams left over, but fear not, it didn't go to waste. It was all delivered to Genesis House, to the facility there. And I tell you the excitement of when the word spread, "There's ice cream here, there's ice cream here." It was really exciting to see them, and they were most appreciative. I attended the DLI memorial ceremony, and that was a wonderful ceremony honoring the military personnel who made the ultimate sacrifice. And there were two names added to the roster this year, unfortunately, but they were killed in late December and in January, I believe it was, this year. And it really, it's such an impressive ceremony, and it really makes you think that Memorial Day is not just an extra day for the weekend, a long weekend. It's, you really concentrate on, with the military does for us, and not just those who have made the ultimate sacrifice, excuse me, except, but also for those who have served and who are currently serving our military. And I was really happy that the city council is always invited to that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. That's your report?
Thank you again. Thank you, Pat Lintel, for attending my MST two months in a row. I came back from vacation and turned right around and had to leave again.
Can you just move that toward you a little bit?
I had to leave again for Philadelphia, so I missed my meeting. I do not see any problem getting to my next one. Anyway, I would like to take this time to thank Dino and John for what happened with FORA, because I don't know if people really, really, really understand how big this is, but it's really big for our city, and this has been going on for a long time, and that's a huge win. And I really want to acknowledge both of your efforts on that. I could go on for another hour with all the personal things I've been doing in my life, but that's not what this is here for. But thank you again, Pat, for attending my meetings.
Thanks.
All right. So as Ms. Lintel mentioned, we launched the Mayor's Advisory Committee for Sustainability at the Sustainable Seaside Earth Day Event. Well-attended, fun. We have a very organized and smart steering committee made up of residents. Ms. Lintel swung by the table, where we had information about what Delray Oaks is already doing, educational information, a raffle of DRO items, and we had craft activities. Mr. Gagliotti was also there, giving test drives of his electric car. This group will officially become Sustainable Delray Oaks, a member of the Sustainable Committees for Monterey County, as quickly as the middle of June. They will then have 501(c)(3) status, and they'll spin off of being a mayor's group into being their own. So look forward to seeing what they come up with. Because of the timing, I actually attended two of the TMC meetings, Transportation Agency of Monterey County. A lot of discussion about Measure X funding, and there is a citizen oversight committee that reviews the independent audits. And I think everyone should have gotten one of these. And, you know, sometimes I know that you just flip these in the garbage or something, but I just want to show you, Delray Oaks is all in green. There are some other cities that are not. And so that was really good to see. We also were talking about, they do a three-year budget process because of all the multimillion dollars of projects that come in and go, and so we're working on that. So for example, the 1920 budget is $20 million, the 2021 is $6 million, and then the 2122 is $12 million. So there's, it's not quite as consistent as ours, a lot more ins and outs. I did have an opportunity to ask the Caltrans representative about the sign for, in front of the Oaks, and he indicated he didn't know anything about it. So he and Dino are going to get that resolved. So that should be coming to the Oaks hopefully soon. I was not able to attend the monthly mayor's meeting due to having to be in Washington, DC for my work. However, I did take Delray Oaks with me. I was asked to participate as a judge for a final project and a panel for an MBA Leadership Course at John Hopkins University in Baltimore. So they all know about Delray Oaks now, all 70 of the MBA students. There was no Water Authority meeting this month. We did have a What's on Your Mind, and it's exciting. Each event, we get a couple of new attendees, including one of our planning commissioners this time, and always new topics. We talked about the airport. We took a look at the map to look at our four-door property and what has already been sold and what isn't. It was just interesting to hear people's reaction to all of that. We talked about the South Boundary Road updates. We talked about the South Boundary Road updates, areas for potential development, and we also talked about the parks. There's a lot of conversations about the parks right now, which is, I think, a good thing to be talking about. The next meeting is this Saturday, from 10 to 12 at Old Town Hall, so I hope you can come join us. We always have some good coffee, and tangerines at least. I got the opportunity to attend the Monterey Unified School District Board Meeting to hear their proposed plan for teacher housing on five of their properties. So it was at the end of a big study for them, and so that's exciting to see what, how they're hoping to blend neighborhood looks and feels into a school property. And one of the properties they were talking about was Delray Woods, where the big field is, they were talking about putting some houses in there, some, a couple of lots, and the sensitivity about the surrounding neighborhoods, where an apartment building wouldn't make sense in that location, where it might in another. So they were excited to have a Delray Oaks elected official there, so I would invite anybody to go, because they were really excited. And it was just right up the street. I was invited, along with Supervisor Adams, to kick off the WeatherTech segment of the MGEN Bike Tour. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. It's similar to the Tour de France. Afterwards, Jerry and I zipped down to General Gym in 218, where we were stopped by our police as the bikes went zipping by through the town, so that was pretty exciting. It was nice to represent the city in that way. I also attended the Monterey Community Foundation Women's Fund Lunch, over 600 attendees, which was, included pretty much the who's who of Monterey County electeds, and educational leaders, and philanthropists, and business owners, everyone there wanting to ensure our girls, young, and mature women have all the opportunities that they possibly can, so it was nice to be able to support our community foundation. The, we were part of the finance committee, and we met to review our first two-year budget, we will be discussing a little later. It does take a village to ensure your finances are spent wisely, and we're on a very positive track right now, so a lot of people are working to make that happen. I also attended the Citizen Action Group's Ice Cream Social. It's always fun, for young and old, even if it's raining. Special thanks to Kim Shirley for organizing the event, and I love the Bring Your Own Bowl idea she implemented. Lastly, we had initial meetings of the arts, parks, and youth mayor advisory committees, lots of energy and a lot of really good ideas to create more connections between all of us, our families, our neighbors, our businesses, and the city. If you would like to participate in a steering committee, or even volunteer, we're gonna have a plethora of events coming up that we'll make sure everyone knows about. We are currently looking for youth, 12 and older. We also need some folks from the Oaks, and business participants, so we can have all perspectives represented, yeah, represented. As the ideas gel, they will come and present to the city council, so everyone understands what's going on. And then, upcoming, I want to remind everyone, What's On Your Mind? this Saturday, and the Housing Element Workshop on Thursday, the 6th. We will be posting the current housing element. It's not currently on the website, but it will be, so we have a point of reference, but it's a very important document to help shape the future of our four-door lands, potentially the 17 acres, and this is the time for your input, how you want the city to move forward, what elements you want, what elements you don't want. So please come. This will be the first, I think we'll have another public workshop down the road, but it's important for your voices to be heard, so thank you. So now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in the public, or the city council, can pull any item? So on item number three, the financials, there was an adjustment to an expenditure. Revenue and expenditures. So do we have a copy of this somewhere?
It's available on the table outside.
Out on the table, if you'd like to see the differences there. No one, okay, all entertain a motion?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda passed. Old business, we have none. New business. The first item is the appointing of planning commissioners. We have four applicants for three spots, and I would like to call, I saw Jeremy. He's not here. Okay. I just saw him, I just saw him first. It's kind of like being at the Oscars and going to the restroom. So would you, do you have a statement, or something you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you. I scripted myself to make the best use of time. Good evening, and thank you for hearing me, mayor, city council, city staff, and neighbors in Delray Oaks. My name is Jeremy Hallock. I've resided happily in our city for seven years. I absolutely love and appreciate our community here, and accordingly, I find within me a strong desire to be a positive contributor to the maintenance and perpetuation of the wonderful quality of life we as a community enjoy. It is with such motivation that I am seeking continued appointments to the City of Delray Oaks Planning Commission. I am currently licensed by the California Contractors State License Board, and recognized by the Department of Consumer Affairs in good standing as a Class B general building contractor. I'm the sole proprietor and operator of my growing construction business, on the level of construction, for all your home improvement. (laughter) And I'm based right here in Delray Oaks. I possess over 18 years of experience in residential and commercial construction, construction, building and design, and project management. I work directly with teams of architects, designers, civil and structural engineers, specialty trade and subcontractors, city and county building inspectors, several local municipality and county planning departments and planning commissions on a daily basis. I have a passion for architectural design, particularly in consideration of its cohesiveness and aesthetic harmony shared with existing forms and natural surroundings. I possess great experience and knowledge of all international building codes, in both commercial and residential building and improvements. I have a strong knowledge of the American Disabilities Act codes, and certified access specialty requirements, OSHA laws and regulations. I've studied and familiarized myself with our city's general plan, and our city's municipal code, and zoning ordinances, particularly titles 15 through 17, as they are directly pertinent to the role of the planning commissioner. During my appointment to the City of Delray Oaks Planning Commission, over the last six months, I have attended the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy. This was an invaluable experience, from which I took away an increasingly strong knowledge of land use, transportation, conservation, noise, open space, and housing elements, as well as California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, recent changes in procedures, environmental impact reports and mitigation thereof, emergency and disaster preparedness, pertinent current and proposed state and federal legislation and grants, and regional housing needs assessment processes. In deciding to further dedicate myself to our city's progressive welfare, I do so at a time which I consider to be crucial and of the utmost importance, since its incorporation and development of the early 50s, with much to consider now and on the immediate horizon as to how we decide to structure and shape Delray Oaks. As our good city grows in area population, features, and facility, there are and will be proposals and projects that will certainly require dedicated, knowledgeable, informed, foresighted, and mindful members of our society to collectively make sound decisions, resulting in positive progression in accordance with our city's general plan, our natural environments, and most importantly, the standards and quality of life that we enjoy here today, and future generations to come. I'm absolutely confident that based on the pertinent knowledge and experience, my love of community, and a strong sense of responsibility and civil commitment, that I would continually be a positive, reliable member of the City of Delray Oaks Planning Commission, and it is with my sincere thanks to all of you for hearing me this evening, for the opportunity to be of service to our community thus far, and for considering me for continued application and appointment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Nope.
No?
I've interviewed all the candidates outside, so.
Oh, you have? Okay. Anyone, any questions? Well, I haven't. Can I ask a question?
Please.
What, if any, considerations do you give when there is strong neighborhood opposition or support of a project?
Yes, any. Quite a bit. The voice of the community speaks very loudly to me. We, of course, have zoning and municipal ordinances that we need to adhere to, that are structured, to keep things aesthetically pleasing, cohesive with one another, in the shape and form, to maintain fluidity, and just a pleasant environment for all. So we have to heed the letter of the law, it's designed for a reason, for anyone's benefit. However, sometimes we have to look at the intent of the law, and consider that it's beautiful the way it is, I personally think, but most of us live in circa 1952 to 54 homes, they're not going to last forever, and progression is inevitable. So I think interspersing and allowing aesthetic changes progressively is entirely acceptable. And again, as you said, it takes a village, you have to listen to each member of the village. If the neighbors are all for it, and in supportive changes, then at the end of the day, they're most exposed to it, and they definitely have a voice, and deserve mine, and the entire planning commissioners, and the council's considerations, so.
One more. What is your vision of what Delray Oaks should and could be?
Well, we should continue to be a very quaint, safe, neighborly, residential neighborhood. I see growth in the future. I see it being approached very delicately, very mindfully, balancing expansion, and gaining revenue, and such, but at the same time maintaining what I consider to be a real gem that we have in this, in this community. So, yeah, I'd like to see a lot stay the same, but I'd like to see, as we grow, it be done in a very, very well-structured way, so that we can maintain, you know, the sense of the quality of life that we have, but grow at the same time.
Thank you. Any public comments, questions? Okay. Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks.
I'll repeat what he said.[1489.01][1489.01](laughter) I've been on the commission now for a year. I enjoy the honor of serving community, and hope to continue to do so. Like Jeremy, I've got many, many years of design, build experience, and contracting, and I'm eager to be a part of Delray Oaks' future. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? I have one.
Uh-oh.[1517.15][1517.15](laughter)
What do you think is the most important skill for a planning commissioner to have?
I think the ability to listen, and set aside personal preferences, and to get a gauge what the community wants, and then understand what the rules are.
What is your position on projects that have the potential to change the overall ambiance of the city?
I mean, if the community supports it, I support it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Scott? Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Hey.
Mayor and council, thank you for your consideration. I don't want to take a lot of time, but my reasons for putting in my application are fairly straightforward. I've really enjoyed being part of the planning commission over the past four years. I've dedicated myself to learning the processes, and gaining as much knowledge as I possibly can, to do the best job that I can, and I would really like to continue serving the city and making a difference. Thank you.
If you are selected as a planning commissioner, what are your three goals you would like to accomplish in your four-year term?
Well, we've got quite a few projects that are coming up. I think the, really the first focus for me would be to really take a hard look at the potential developments that we have, and finding the right balance, striking the right balance between developing the right way, in accordance with not only our city codes, but also what the public wants. And I think we can do that. So really, I think that's going to be a large part of what the planning commission will be taking on. You know, I guess I'd add to that, that I would have hoped that more citizens would have applied for this, for these planning commission opportunities. I mean, besides the three incumbents, I think there was only one other person that applied, and, you know, you can tell by the room here that there are a lot of emotions, there's a lot of folks that have opinions, particularly on things that are, that are going to become issues, that are going to be before the planning commission. And not only is it a great opportunity for someone to give your opinion from the dais, you can be part of the decision-making process. And I'll just tell you, that's going to be tough for anyone that's standing on the, or sitting on the planning commission, because we're like everybody else. We love this city, we are doing it as volunteers, we don't get paid, and I know it's going to be difficult. Whoever's on the planning commission, it is going to be some high adventure there with some of the issues that are coming up.[1733.15][1733.15](laughter) So, I'm sorry, I, that was, I guess, what was the?[1742.15][1742.15](laughter) I hit off on a tangent there.
I couldn't have pleaded better for it, but, goals that you would like to accomplish?
Yeah, just making the city a better place. I know there's a lot of things coming up, and I really think that we can strike that right balance between developing the right way, getting the revenue that we need, and maintaining the character of the city. And then, I guess, the last thing that I'd like to accomplish is also finding that balance between what citizens want as they improve upon their houses, and do improvements in the city, and balancing that with the codes that are out there. I mean, you see that's on the agenda here today as well, and that is probably one of the most difficult things that we do. the most difficult things that we do within the planning commission. So, that would be something that I would hope that we would do well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any public questions? Thank you, Scott. Debbie Blakesley is the fourth applicant, and she is in Alaska, I believe, but Jim Van der Swan will be speaking on her behalf. We'll see how the questions go.
Well, I heard you were ready for this. I'm grilling me for questions later. I can't help you because I'm not qualified for this position, but Madam Mayor and the members of the city council and those in the audience tonight, I'm representing Debbie Blakesley because she had a conflict. She's in Alaska, a long way away here. She couldn't change the schedule, but she's applying for this position for planning commissioner, and she has this little short message that I will now read for you. My name is Debbie Blakesley, and I have been a resident of Delray Oaks since September 2010. I'm here asking you to consider me to fill one of the vacancies on the DRO Planning Commission. I would like a chance to serve my community in this position as growth and change come to DRO and our neighboring cities, and I would like to have a voice in the decision-making process that affect our community. As a member of the planning commission and local government, I could be a part of this important service to our citizens. I understand that I would be expected to have knowledge of our local ordinances and issues as residents and businesses come with their building requests and plans. I am willing to put in the time and preparation it takes to be ready for the meetings. I will bring an open mind and the dedication to resolve issues that the planning commission will be addressing. I know I will have no problems working with fellow commission members as my listening, communication, and collaboration skills have been known by a 33-year career at UPS. I consider myself open-minded and flexible and willing to learn what it takes to be successful in this position. I have had a lot of training in my management career that include team-building, conflict resolution, workforce planning, labor relations, time management, just to name a few. My patience, fairness, and good analytical skills will also benefit our residents and businesses as they come and present their plans and concerns about their land use and property requirements and projects. It can be an exciting time with a potential for growth and development in Delray Oaks as we consider options for our portion of the Fort Worth property. Thank you for considering my application and giving me a chance to serve my community. And that's from Debbie Blakesley.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay.
All right.
You don't want to grill me? Good.
What's your vision, Jim? So, we're going to do a written ballot right now, so we're just going to take a minute, and then Kim will count them all up, and we'll know in just a moment.
Do you want me to hand to?
Is that an empty chair? Arlen, is that an empty chair? Okay. So if someone is standing up there, there's a chair. Oh, Helen. Okay.
It's exciting.
There's people sitting out in the lobby even.
Do we have a decision?
The three with the highest votes are Jeremy Hallick, Scott Donaldson, and Mike Rosner.
And thank you to Debbie for standing up. All right. Our next item to discuss is the appeal of planning commission decision for 5 Quendale Avenue. It's my understanding that Susan Blush is in the crowd? Susan Blush?
I'm mayor and council. The next agenda item before us is the appeal of the planning commission decision for 5 Quendale Avenue. In the interest of time, the appellant in this case has requested a continuance of the hearing tonight to allow for an opportunity to discuss the matter with the applicant and to also prepare other materials if this matter is to go to an appeal.
That's correct.
And so with that, as sort of a scene setter, I turn it over to the appellant for comments.
Okay, just for clarification, did you want me to ask or explain why I'd like a continuance in more detail?
Please.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That is the discussion, about the continuation. It's not about the issue.
All right. I thought I was supposed to talk about the issue, but, well, trying to be a good neighbor and being new to the community, the issue that we have is obviously not personal with our neighbor. However, I am attorney by nature, and that's what I do, for 36 years, so I know that the best result is when we have a compromise. So I was hoping that we could sit down with a neutral third party. Our city planner has volunteered to do that so that we could discuss what the issues are and see if we can reach a resolution that would leave both of us satisfied, not necessarily ecstatic, but satisfied. And so that's my request in the continuance. The other thing is, is I believe that the homeowner, as well as my husband and I, had prepared a presentation that's based on PowerPoint, so it's a little hard to do the PowerPoint when I say, "Look at page thus and such," and then, of course, the people in the audience would not even know what we're talking about because they wouldn't see the pictures.
And so, thank you.
Okay.
And if the applicant would like to make some brief remarks?
From here?
No.
Please.
I would like to move forward, hopefully this evening, with trying to make a decision. For me, this has been going on now, on three months, for a fence. My neighbor and I had a brief discussion as she introduced herself to me, and the only thing I can say to her is I'll reassure her that I'm going to landscape so it doesn't look barren or like a fortress, as you described. This is important to me for many reasons. One, my safety, my privacy. I also have three dogs. Some people have kids, I have dogs, and they can't run out or go anywhere. In the middle of the night or during the day, I have to keep them on leashes when I'm taking them out. It's becoming a hardship financially. I'm nervous right now. I just, I want to get it done. I had my initial meeting, I applied in March, then I had a meeting on April 10th, and there was some confusion. So another meeting was scheduled for April 30th, which was then canceled an hour before. So I've been really tested with my patience and trying very hard to be positive, and I just really want to get this done. My overall remodel started out, let's see, they said it would take three months. I'm now going on two years, and this is the last part of it. So, that's why I wish to talk about this this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to open up public comments, if anyone would like to comment about the continuance.
My name is Frederica Jones. I live at Hillwell Place, and I wrote a letter of support for the project. I was proud to do that. And as Kathy had said, you know, to drive by there and to see a project that has been taking over two years to accomplish from the initial inside outward, it's really an unfair situation that you're putting this homeowner in who's trying to do everything according to ordinances, according to your laws that you have on your planning commission, and from the planning commission meeting to this now to get continued on, and the lack of communication that I see as between planning commission, city manager, city council members, and now to put it all back on Kathy's shoulders is really an unfair government practice. We're all here trying to beautify our city, increase the property values in our community, all within the regulations and ordinances, and this wavering back and forth, it just is really trying on not only Kathy's patience, but all of us. We go drive by there, and it's been not anything part of Kathy's, but it's an eyesore just the way it is. That red taping around is like, can we just get our acts together and move forward? And you've already said she can have a six-foot fence, whether it's a three-foot fence or a four-foot fence, it's like, let's make a decision tonight and let's get this done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Judy Murata. I'm a 47-year resident of the city, and I have seen people over the years do really nice things to improve their homes and their landscaping, and I would say that what Kathy Sampaiero has done to that house is remarkable. Most of the homeowners on the Portola side of Delray Oaks that have lots on the corner do not have anything more than a three or four-foot backyard. So if you drive down Portola and look at all the homes that are on the corners like Kathy's house is, you realize that their side yard is actually their backyard. Most of us have a fence in our backyards. I think it's very reasonable for her to be allowed to put a side yard fence, which will become her backyard inevitably. The pictures that I've seen are gorgeous. I only wish that a lot more residents would really care about the appearance of their house the way she does, and I think it's important that we address this issue tonight. Three months of meetings is a little bit too much. Let's give her a decision tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
I'm not going to address anything that anyone said, but I forgot to mention this. When I was looking through the documentation today, it's my understanding that one of the rules that the city attorney provided calls for the flagging or webbing to be done within seven days of the planning commission meeting. In this circumstance, by happenstance or whatever, I don't know, but the webbing and flagging was not put up in accordance with what her plan is, and it was not corrected properly until this weekend, and now it's up the way it should be, and it looks the way she presented in her plan. But I think that in fairness, there should be the seven-day rule again. I'm sorry that she's waited this long, but it's an important issue. It's very important, even though we're new members of this, to voice this opinion, and I think it's important for other people in the community to be aware of what it truly is going to look like. She had put up a piece of the panel fencing before, and it might not be a bad idea for her to put that piece up again so people can see what it really looks like. And then we can have a full and proper community interaction according to the rules that are already in place, and hopefully, maybe in the interim, we can reach some sort of resolution of it. But that would be my request, that it follow, I think it's 17.56040 or 030, but it's one of those Os in there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we can have one more comment. However, I want to ensure that it's not about the content of what we're talking about, that it's simply about the continuation or not.
I responded to her saying that the name wasn't put up the time.
We're getting into content. It's called a logic.
That has to do, yeah, no. Do you have anything further to say about the continuation that we need to consider?
I just don't want people to be this way. It wouldn't be fair allowing them to make that statement when I didn't act properly and properly.
So that would be part of the discussion if we decide not to continue this evening or to continue, and we have that discussion in June. Did you have anything else to say about the continuation? Okay. Back to the council, or, excuse me, any other public comments?
That project has been going on for so long, and about that fence, I've been driving up and down the streets, and there are much, many fences like that coming from the side yard.
So Irene, we need to talk just about whether we discuss this this evening or if we continue it until next. The actual subject about the fence details will be discussed at another time.
Then I would suggest, I mean, despite that you not continue this, it's okay, should you keep going with them. Have a, get her house done.
Okay, thank you. All right, public comment closed. Going to open it up for conversation?
I'm not sure how to ask this. Can I just ask as far as the continuance goes?
I have a question about the continuance. What period are we talking about, the continuance? Would it be a week from today? Would it be a year from today? I mean, that's an exaggeration, but, can we have a timeframe, please?
Is this going to be our way or not? Is that what it is? She doesn't want the fence?
So I just want to be clear that this is not typical city council process. This is a, the reason this came to the city council is because there was an appeal, and so when there's an appeal, it comes to us. We haven't had one of these. I've never had one of these, and so what you're watching is us trying to figure out how to do this best.
So, the applicant comes before the planning commission with her project.
Yes.
Pardon me?
Microphone.
The applicant comes to the planning commission with their project. I know that, I sat on the planning commission before. They have a 30-day appeal after the final decision. They have a 30-day appeal after the final decision. I'm not quite sure, because it hasn't been described to us as a city council, why it's gone before the planning commission three times? Is that correct? I'm trying to figure out what the process is. Is it just because of lack of following the rules in order for the planning commission to make a decision? And if so, you know, they finally made a decision, we didn't create this appeal. I just want to make sure that the public knows that we didn't just randomly say we would like to make this appeal. It's not this council that is doing this, it's the applicant that has put in the appeal.
So, if I may, let me just provide a little bit of context for the council and the public. The applicant in this case, Ms. Sampaiero, I hope I got that right, applied to the planning commission for a use permit to install a fence that was a certain height on the side and back and a certain height in the front. It was the height in the front that required the use permit, it exceeded three feet. And I don't know the reasons for the planning commission meetings that didn't happen. I don't know those specifics right off the top of my head, but I can tell you that the planning commission made their decision, and the decision was appealed not by the applicant, though I'm certain the applicant's not happy with that decision. She was not the appellant. The person that appealed was a resident, and that appeal was made in a timely fashion and is before council tonight. In discussing the matter with both the applicant and the appellant, in consultation with the city attorney, it became clear to us that the appellant would like to be able to discuss this with the applicant and reach some kind of agreement, and that is the reason why, for the request for a continuance. As it relates to the timing of a continuance, a continuance is to a date certain. The date certain is at the pleasure of the council. The date that we had defaulted to, and may still default to based on your decision, was the June city council meeting. I believe it's June 25th, but it's the June council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting. However, to be clear, a continuance is to a date certain.
So, in other words, there's no fault of the planning commission or the council that this is being, going on and on and on, and I admire the fact that the two residents want to resolve this themselves. I think that is a very strong point, and I think it's a good point for all of us to try and get together with our neighbors and try and resolve this. So, I admire them for doing that. If that's what you want to do, you're shaking your head no, so, you know, I'm not quite sure what's going on.
So, to clarify a little bit there, so, the appellant is requesting the continuance.
The appellant is, okay.
Is requesting the continuance. The applicant would like this heard tonight. So, the decision before the council is first and foremost whether to continue the item, and if so, to what date certain. If the council decides to continue the item, the item is closed for the night. If the council decides to hear the item, not continue it, and hear the item tonight, then we will move to an appeal hearing. The city attorney will lay the groundwork for that in terms of your role as a quasi-judicial body, and we'll hear both parties and make a decision tonight.
I want to make an important distinction, is that the applicant is not the appellant. That's the important decision, and the appellant is asking for the continuance. So, the decision is basically, we must be considering the appellant in this matter, okay? That's the first thing. Second thing is, I mean, we've been on planning commission for, you know, for like six years. This is, I think, the most expeditious way to handle this. This is not the body to make these kind of decisions. I really think that the planning commission is absolutely better equipped to do this, and I think that the most expeditions, I think the fastest way to do that is just to get with your neighbors. You come up with a solution, and you wouldn't probably even have to go to another hearing and just handle it with staff. I mean, if speed is of the nature, tying this up into an appeal process is only going to make this thing longer. Why don't we have a comment period afterward, so we can all speak and then the public can kind of comment basically on what we said?
Finished? Yeah, that's fine.
So, that's why I think I strongly recommend that we continue this and meet the wishes of the appellant. If the applicant wants to appeal, then we then have to address the wishes of the applicant.
Any other comments? Questions?
I like the idea of neighbors discussing the issue, and I think, I've talked with both the applicant and the appellant on the phone prior to this evening, and I think possibly they could come to an agreement because the applicant has said that she was going to do landscaping and all, and I think if she agreed to do, put some bushes and so on, so there wouldn't be this stark white wall, that that might be something that would be acceptable to the appellant. I don't know. This is just my thinking that, so, I guess what I'm thinking, since you Kathy want to progress very rapidly, that if we did a continuation, that the two of you could get together this week and perhaps come up with some kind of a resolution that wouldn't postpone the advancement of all of your remodels and all.
Ms. Counsel? No?
The applicant has her hand up.
Is there a motion?
I can make a motion. I make a motion that we continue the appeal and have the neighbors see if they can work this thing out.
To a date certain?
I'll second.
Well, and the date certain would be the next council meeting.
Good. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So, it passed. So, what we'll be doing is we'll be continuing it until the June council meeting.
I'm not even available on June 25th. That's my mother's birthday. She's turning 85 years old, and I'm not even here. And I really feel like this is very unfair because there isn't, there's more to this story to answer Ms. Clark's question about why this is outside of her dates on her property, which I hope.
This is not the body for that. This is a planning commission. It's a planning.
So, there's a lot of emotion involved in this. However, this isn't the right body, and we're not prepared to do this yet, and we have to honor not only the vote that just happened, but also the appellant, so.
It came to this body because of the prestigious attitude of the ARC, which is.
We also found, there was no error according to. A motion has been made and voted on.
Okay. So, they need to contact you now?
Any questions, any questions, call.
Okay. So, I'm being advised that any questions, any comments, need to be directed to the city manager at this point.
After the meeting.
At another time, yeah. All right. So, we're going to move on to our next item.
And we just address our concern about the date. We'll find a date that works.
Okay. We will find a date that works. Okay. I'm sorry about the confusion. This isn't the right body for this. So, our next agenda item is the draft two-year budget for FY 1920 and FY 2021. I'd like to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present to you a two-year budget for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. This, first of all, this budget's a result of a lot of hard work on the part of city staff, the city council budget committee, and I just want to call out Roberto Moreno. Where are you, pardon? He's given up his seat. So, Roberto is our contract finance director, and Roberto has done amazing work on preparing this budget. Kim Gravalo has done remarkable work pulling this report together. The council budget committee consisting of Mayor Kerr, council member Getzel, and Mr. Allian have met numerous times, done detailed reviews, and I appreciate that very, very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2019, 2020 proposed budget represents a $4.8 million in revenues and $4.44 million in expenditures, essentially an 8.9% increase in revenues and 8.8% increase in expenditures. The 2021, 2020 and 2021 budget represents a $334,000 decrease in revenues, and that decrease in revenues is based on planning assumptions that were approved by the budget committee and they're before you tonight. We're essentially planning for a 10% reduction in sales tax and cannabis tax revenues as an anticipated recession may come in year two of this budget cycle. The expenditures for the second year of the budget show a decrease of $237,000, and so your budget is balanced even for year two. What you'll see in this format is a pretty significant change in budget format because we're transitioning to a fund-based accounting software system. We've moved away from, it's one of the many improvements we're making here at the city, we've moved away from QuickBooks as our accounting software, and we're using MIP, which is a contemporary municipal fund-based accounting system that is used by many of the surrounding cities and other agencies. And so, your format that you'll see looks different. The purpose of the two-year budget, which is exciting from a staff perspective as well as for the public, is it gives us a two-year look at what we're looking at for potential revenues, and it gives us a two-year look at what we're planning for potential expenditures, and it lets the public see that, it lets the council make some decisions based on that, and it's a much more strategic look. The budget document focuses primarily on the general fund, and as I said, it's, fund-based accounting basically means we get to plan and project by fund. The general fund is your largest fund with $4.8 million projected for next year in revenue. Our gas tax, which is a restricted fund that comes to us from the state and must be used on our roads, is $37,000. Your SB 1 funds that are similarly focused and restricted on street repairs are $26,000, and your Measure X funds are also focused on transportation projects are $60,000. Based on the project we're doing this year and getting the Measure X loan from TMC to fund this year's road project, your future Measure X dollars for about the next 10 years will go straight to paying that loan off, and so it won't even come to the city coffers, and that's reflected in the budget. A few things I'd like to highlight on the expenditure side. A reason for the significant increase in your expenditures and your revenues is the contract we have with the airport for police services. It increases the revenues in because of the contract fee that is paid to us by the airport district. It increases the expenditure side because that fee comes in to pay the salaries and benefits and equipment and training costs of an 11-man police department rather than a six-person police department. In addition to that expenditure, we have a retiring of the FORA loan programmed into this budget pending approval by the FORA board. That will be an aggressive payment schedule that will cost us on the expenditure side, save us tremendously on the interest side, and be retired next year, so it won't factor into the following budget year, 2020, 2021. Looking at the 2020, 2021 year, the major operating revenue changes, I mentioned the decrease in revenues from an anticipated downturn in the economy. There is also, with the sun setting of FORA, a loss of a grant that we've received every year from FORA for caretaker costs associated with the four-door properties of approximately $179,000. So, that grant will go away with FORA's sunset. On the operating expenditure side, what will cause the increase in operating expenditures is a planned 2% COLA for our employees and continued increases in retirement costs as projected by CALPERS, and a 10% increase projected in healthcare premiums for that calendar year. It also projects a 10% increase in workers' comp premiums and a 2% increase in all other costs, unless they have a specific increase in a contract such as our fire contract with the city of Seaside, which has a COLA that's above 2% and fixed and identified in the contract. As you look through the budget report, you'll see pie charts that break down the expenditures by area, and I'm happy to answer any questions on those. And then there is a detailed breakdown of each of the line items in the budget that's explained, and I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the detail in the detailed breakdown in the budget. I want to spend just a minute on retirement costs. Retirement costs are slowly driving cities into bankruptcy across California. Pacific Rose on a slow slide to bankruptcy, it's painful to watch. We are not, and we are not for several reasons. Previous councils were dead set on not increasing our PERS formula, in other words, our retirement formula, while many other cities did. And so, while we are, we don't have as generous a retirement formula as many of the surrounding cities, it's affordable, and we're actually able to budget and pay for it, but it's a growing portion of our city budget, of our expenditures. And so, what we've done is we've broken out all of those CALPERS costs and laid them out as plainly as we can, it's fairly arcane stuff, in this budget so that you can see it, so you can understand what those costs are and how we plan to address paying for There are three components that I'd mentioned in the CALPERS costs. Two of them are normally budgeted for in our annual budget, and that is the CALPERS employer normal cost, which for next year is $145,000, and our CALPERS unfunded accrued liability cost, which for next year is $164,000. Those two line items are in the budget and programmed for funding by revenues. The part that we've not spoken of normally in the budget that is buried in our annual audit, and it's buried in every city's annual audit, is the total actuarially unfunded liability for retirement. For this city, that number is roughly, depending on which number we're looking at, these are actuarial numbers, so they vary between these reports, between $1.46 million and $1.55 million that is unfunded to fully fund the retirement of our previous employees and projected current employees. That, we are proposing that the city take a, set us on a path of fully funding that $1.5 million unfunded liability in 10 years. With 10 annual payments of $150,000 into the Section 115 trust that you established some months ago, that money set aside into the Section 115 trust remains in the control of the city. It's not sent to Sacramento into some fund that we lose control of. It is, because it's a trust, it can only be spent on retirement, on PERS obligations. Because it's a trust, it can only be spent on retirement, on PERS obligations. So it's restricted that way, and it grows at an interest rate determined by the risk factor that the council takes. We've set a fairly aggressive risk factor now. There's no money in that account, so I made that decision. Once we fund it, we'll be coming back to the council to ensure that the council is comfortable with and makes that decision on the risk factor. But it will accrue at an interest commensurate with the risk profile that you decide on, and it will accrue year on year. And based on what we currently know, in 10 years' time, if we hold true to that $150,000 investment per year, we will have a fully funded PERS retirement system. Very, very unique in cities and something that I hope you approve. So that's the bit on PERS and retirement. I mentioned the debt service for FORA. That's a $342,000 expenditure for next year to get us to pay off, but it saves us $200,000 in interest if we let it sit there. There are other surplus fund decisions, allocating additional funds to economic uncertainty reserve. I mentioned the $150,000 to the Section 115 trust, and then the use of remaining fund balance of 159, which frankly speaking, my recommendation is let that stay until we know exactly what your ending fund balance is, and then we can come back and bring some recommendations before you. So what the staff recommendation before I turn it over to council for questions or the public for comment, staff recommendation for tonight is that if the council and the public are satisfied with the integrity of the budget presented, that the council consider approving the two-year budget with the fee schedule going into effect immediately. And the contribution amount, which is $13,000 on the last page of the budget report, withheld for discussion and approval when the staff is able to bring to you a procedure that more transparently and properly walks us through the process of who's asking for what contribution and why, and allows you to make an informed decision at a future date. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
All right. Yes.
Yes, on the contributions, I think I'd really like to see the city set the policy for the contributions, because, you know, we could get contributions from who knows who, you know, what. So I'd really like to see a policy regarding that.
I agree.
I think that the PERS and trust is brilliant. Maybe we'll be buying up all the other cities because they're going to be going under. But you know what, it's frugal. It's the way, you know, I run my family. I think, you know, we are a big family here, and I think it's the right thing to do. And I commend you for doing that. Thank you so much. I think the, this whole budget is fantastic. Everybody did a great job on it. I'd like to see it passed tonight and implemented. Throw a stand.
I'd just like to thank the budget committee because I know how many hours you've devoted to this and coming up with what I think is a good budget. And I too hope that it gets passed tonight. But thank you all for your good, hard work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I echo definitely what the two of you said. I mean, this is an extremely tight budget. It's a very, very good budget. The one question I had on the CALPERS and the unfunded liability is absolutely unique because I've now seen three budgets in three different public agencies that are not doing this. And in fact, one of the problems that we're seeing in others that I want to know if it's kind of accounted for, CALPERS just reduces return requirements by almost a full point. So the need doesn't go away, but the unfunded liability goes up, and then that just gets washed down to the jurisdictions. What was our estimate in that? Did we take the lower number that CALPERS is suggesting, or did we take the higher number that their return limits are set right now? Just as a, for information.
So I'll turn the question over, if I may, to Roberto.
So our numbers are all based on actual figures. As of June 30, 2018, they did not reply to the future.
Future. So we're going to have another donor, we as well as the entire state is going to have another donor goal. But we'll be better prepared for it. Okay. Yeah, thank you. What else? I totally agree with the policy and the fee schedule. The debt service on FORA, if we approve it, that means that we can start, it hasn't been approved before, but that means that we've got money, we can start executing on that.
That's right.
That's, I'll tell you this, that's a very powerful position to be in with the finance committee at FORA, because then we can just go in and say, look, we're ready, you know. If you guys approve it, we'll write checks tomorrow. So that's something.
Well, they'll write checks in July.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, to echo what you guys said, you guys have done an incredible job. This is a really, really solid budget, and I hope to see it passed tonight.
Great. So I want to give a big shout out to Roberto and Dino, who are really the masterminds behind all of this. They bring us all these numbers, and the budget committee says, yes, yes, what about this and why about this? So the hours need to be credited to those two. And it's a pretty amazing budget to see for the first time in our city where we have emergency savings. We're moving towards, you know, allocating something that other cities just aren't able to or not focusing on. And so it's very unique, and so thank you for tax dollars and our businesses and, you know, helping us make this happen. So thank you. Any public comment about the budget? All right, public comment closed. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the draft of the two-year budget for fiscal year 1920 and 2021.
With the fee schedule immediately and then the policies.
Yes.
Was that a second?
Actually, why don't we just, let's amend, I'd like to amend that, that motion. Accepting the staff recommendation, but with the fee schedule, the immediacy release of the fee schedule, and then to hold the, what's it, 13K from that and come up with a policy, come back to that.
Contribution policy. Okay. So second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any conversation? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we've accepted the draft of the '20 and '21 fiscal budget with the fee schedule taking effect immediately and the contribution being looked at for further policy. So congratulations.
All right.
All right. So our next item to discuss is the Monterey Peninsula Airport District letter regarding access road.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We received a letter from the airport district May 6th requesting the initiation of a process to amend the city's general plan circulation element to allow for a northside access road. The letter is enclosed in your, is in your packet. The purpose of the, this is an information item only tonight, not for a decision. The purpose of the information item is to share this letter with the public, share this letter with the council, and to take public comment and council comment. Staff plans to schedule a public workshop on this item alone where we can devote, what I suspect will be at least two hours, to a robust discussion about city concerns, residential concerns, business concerns, and allow the airport staff to address those concerns and explain the necessity of their request. And so I know we have Michael Pierre here tonight, and Board Member Mary Ann Lefell from the airport board. Thank you both for coming. And, Madam Mayor, if you start with a public comment or with their comment, how would you like it to be seen?
I think their comment. The airport comment.
All right.
We don't know what the letter says.
Are there copies?
There are copies outside and it is published online, but let me, well, the synopsis, sure. The synopsis of the letter is that the airport is.
I'm happy to read it.
Go ahead.
Okay. It's dated May 6, 2019. It was addressed to Dino Pick. RE: Request for an amendment to the city of Delray Oaks general plan circulation element policy. Dear Mr. Pick, consistent with our continued discussions with the city of Delray Oaks, city, regarding the airport's recently approved airport master plan, we are reinitiating our request for the city to begin the process of amending the city's general plan circulation element that currently doesn't support the possible northside access road that is reflected in the recently approved master plan. We would like to set up a phone call or meeting with the appropriate staff members to learn more about the city's requirement regarding the, can everyone hear me okay? Regarding the formal general plan amendment application process. The Federal Aviation Administration's FAA funding is provided by grant fiscal year, so it is imperative that we move forward as soon as possible with the general plan amendment application process to maximize our federal funding sources. Therefore, I would greatly appreciate your expedited review of this request. My staff and I will be available to accommodate you and your staff's calendar. As you know, on November 26, 2018, after a detailed environmental review process under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, the Monterey Peninsula Airport District, MPAD, board certified the final environmental impact report, FEIR, scheduled 2015121105, adopted findings including a mitigation monitoring and reporting program and statement of overriding considerations, and approved the airport master plan project. The EIR evaluated and the board approved short-term project components at a project-specific level and long-term project components at a programmatic level. Short-term project components that were approved for the north side of the airport include the relocation of 44 general aviation hangars and the aircraft rescue and firefighting, ARFF, building from the southeast side of the airfield to the northeast hanger slash apron, i.e. Navy Flying Club area. To allow both emergency access and the nominal vehicular trips associated with the northeast hangars, less than 20 peak hour trips, a new northside access road was approved on airport property that would connect to Delray Gardens Drive through property already owned by the airport district within the city of Delray Oaks. The existing access to the northeast hanger slash apron, i.e. airport road, would be terminated west of the northeast hanger slash apron area to prevent through traffic across the north side of the airport. To accommodate the proposed northside roads connection to Delray Gardens Drive, MPAD, will submit the city's required encroachment slash street opening permit application. However, prior to the submission of this permit, it is our understanding that an amendment to the general plan policy C-17 is required. Therefore, we would like to initiate the general plan amendment application process to request that policy C-17 be amended as follows. Quote, "The city will cross out not support. Consider the potential northside access from Highway 218 and Delray Gardens Drive crossed out, or any airport access through the city of Delray Oaks regular, for purposes of emergency access and access to and from other land uses subject to the approved airport master plan. Although we understand that a more formal application process may be required, we would like to emphasize the following with respect to our general plan amendment request, which may facilitate our future discussions with you and your planning staff regarding our request. Bullet number one, circulation element policy C-17 is inconsistent with the current airport access that occurs through the city at Stone Creek Village. Bullet number two, providing the airport's ARFF facility with a direct connection to the city of Delray Oaks would facilitate additional emergency support to the city. Bullet number three, the airport master plan final EIR contains in-depth analysis of potential impacts related to the northside road and short-term northside development, as well as a policy consistency analysis with the city of Delray Oaks general plan. The airport is available to assist the city in its utilization of the analysis provided in the EIR to streamline its own SEQA process for the general plan amendment. Please let us know how best to facilitate the city's use of this information as expeditiously as possible and what additional SEQA documentation and analysis may be required." We're almost there. Bullet number four, public use of the northside road beyond the short-term projects approved in the context of the airport master plan final EIR may require additional SEQA environmental review if impacts do not fall within the impact envelope of the environmental analysis provided in the final EIR. The SEQA process provides the city with continued input into future land uses on the airport to minimize potential impacts on city residents. We look forward to continuing to work with the city to create mutually acceptable and beneficial relationships between the airports and its users and the city and its residents. I will reach out to you early next week in order to set up a meeting with your planning staff. If you have questions or need further information prior to the meeting, please do not contact me at your convenience at 831-648-7000. Sincerely, Mr. Michael LaPierre." LaPierre?
LaPierre.
So we would love to hear from you.
Mayor and members of the council, first of all, I apologize for the lengthiness of that letter. We just bought a new printer, so we thought we'd try it out. It is a pleasure to be here, and I want to point out the long working relationship we have with the city and what we've done in the past few years to develop that relationship in a positive way. We think that it's important for neighbors to be collaborative. We think it's important for us to work together for the good of the city, and in our case, the good of the airport. I want to add a little context to that letter. The master plan process for the airport was really initiated about six years ago at the direction of the Federal Aviation Administration. And for those of you who don't know, our airports in the United States are governed by and regulated by the FAA. They said to us, you have a safety and security concern that you've had for a long time, and it's now time for you to address that. And it principally revolves around the location of the terminal building and the proximity of that building and its operating area to the taxiways. And long detailed, we don't need to get into that this evening, although I'd be happy to answer questions about it. The board at that time chose to move forward with the master plan process, which is a 20-year window of what the airport, how the airport would be developed if, in fact, that development were required. It's not, we are going to do it, it is, if the demand is there to develop, we'll move forward. In our case, it's a little bit simpler than that. We have to address the safety and security concerns relative to the new terminal building. Now, what does all of that have to do with the road that we're requesting you consider approving? In order for us to relocate the terminal building to a safe and secure location, we need to relocate certain components on the airport, principally the general aviation facilities that are adjacent to the existing terminal, and the aircraft rescue and firefighting station, which for our purposes addresses all of the fire concerns and the safety concerns on airport as they relate to aircraft activity. It also, because of our relationship with the city of Monterey, provides for structural service as well. So it's not just for airport use, it is also structural, and they use that station to provide. provide services to the entirety of their jurisdiction on the east side of Highway 1. It's a very collaborative relationship we have with the city, and it works quite well, just as our police contract with this city works well. But we need to move those hangars and that fire station to allow for the relocation of the terminal building, which then allows us to address that safety and security concern that FAA raised their hand about six years ago and said, "It's time for you to do this." So what we've proposed is to move the general aviation hangars. The letter said 44. Those are 44 new, and there are seven existing that would be rehabilitated, so there's 52 hangars there. And then the aircraft rescue and firefighting station. That's the entirety of the short-term development that we're proposing in the master plan. That development, what I just articulated, based on the traffic analysis that was done, would generate about 92 vehicle movements a day. When you do a SEQA process, those of you that have done this, and this is my first, I was told that this would be a difficult process, and it certainly was. You are required by the regulation to evaluate worst-case scenario, which we did. So the report highlights worst-case scenario, which includes ultimate full build-out of the north side of our property, which is where the 7,000 vehicle movements came from. That, however, is not what we're focused on. What we are focused on is the safety and security of the airport. Moving the terminal building, relocate in order to, facilitating this, the movement of the terminal building by the relocation of and development of 52 general aviation hangars and an aircraft rescue and firefighting station. If we go farther than that, and I believe the letter highlighted this, there will be additional environmental work that will need to be done. Quite frankly, the opportunity for us to develop beyond that doesn't look very promising because of the environmental concerns. So our focus over the next several years will be to develop the airport so that it is safe, secure, and efficient for our users. So I think, in that context, I think we addressed one concern that we've heard in the community about the number of traffic movements. Let me tell you a couple more things about the road. First of all, the road will be built about 100 feet away from the nearest fence or the nearest residential area. It will also be depressed about 10 to 15 feet below its current grade. Have to do that to be able to get the grade to come up the hill that a vehicle or a small truck could do. So it will be depressed to the point where, with the exception of maybe a large truck, you won't even see the vehicles. So we think we found a strategy here that addresses the concerns that we heard in our, now two meetings with the residents of the Oaks, and we addressed the concerns that we heard from previous council about the concerns as they relate to the impact of this road, of our proposed road, on your community. We went as far as studying all of the traffic impacts all the way out to 218, and we coordinated all of those activities with Caltrans as part of their corridor study. We've done an inordinate amount of SEQA work around the entirety of the development, which we are happy to share with the city and have in the past. Your previous city manager was actually on the technical advisory committee that spanned a two-year period and met on several occasions, I can't tell you the exact number, but we wanted to make sure that our neighbors were ready on what we were proposing. So that, in a nutshell, is the road that we're asking for. We own the property, and we're looking ostensibly to you to allow us to provide for a curb cut that would allow us to develop the road. That's really the essence of our request today. The reason for the expedited treatment that we've asked you, and it was in the letter, is the funding cycle for FAA. We know that this project is, in FAA parlance, programmed for a significant amount of money next federal fiscal year. Those funds will only be available to the airport should we successfully complete the NEPA process, which is well underway. And in order for that to be complete, we need to work with you to find that solution that works for you and allows the road to go through. The other component about this road that I really want to highlight is it does not connect to Airport Road. It will not be a bypass to get from 218 to Fremont. There will be no physical connection between the road that we're asking you to approve and the existing road that's there today, Airport Road. Those two will not connect. They will both function to serve separate portions of the airport. So the idea that we're going to close Airport Road and dump all of that traffic over on Delray Oaks is not the case. Simply put, the two roads will serve separate masters, if you will. Airport Road will serve the existing development. The new road that we're asking you to approve will serve the future development of those 52 hangars and the aircraft rescue and firefighting station. So I hope in all of my remarks I've cleared up a couple of misconceptions about the road and provided you with a little bit of a background regarding the nature and the need for the expedited treatment. We've been at this with you for six years now. We've done all of the studies. Again, we will provide those all to you, and I think we have in extended detail. We'll provide more of that. But I trust that that gives you some background behind the request. I know that one of my board members, Mary Ann Luffel, is here this evening, and I think if it's a pleasure of the council, I'd like to ask her to wrap up our comments, and then we're here to your pleasure.
Lovely.
Thank you.
I am Mary Ann Luffel, and I'm actually a resident of the City of Monterey. I live on the hill, look down at the airport. When I ran for office, I said, "This is kind of good. I can see what's going on most of the time over there. Don't have to go near it." And I think it's really important to point out how well the City of Delray Oaks and the airport have worked together over the years. And most people don't realize that the airport owns Tarpees. That is airport property. We also own the land under the Stone Creek Kitchen and the Jack-in-the-Box. And that other land that was developed was all a long-term negotiation between the property owners, the City of Delray Oaks, and the airport as Stone Creek was developed. And I worked, those of you who know, I was a banker. I worked at a competing bank. When I saw that Wells Fargo was taking that spot, I thought, "Actually, it's brilliant." I had begged one of my former employers to go in there a long time. So it's an interesting piece of property, but I do think it's important to realize that we do both benefit from that property, and it has been a very mutual existence. The other long-term thing that I'm proud that I was able to work on with all of you is the merger of our police forces. And we had a police chief who had accomplished what he wanted to do at a very small airport. You had a very small police force. And what we were able to do is to retain a really good talent and to be able to do the training that's really required for a much larger operation. And I think that we have both seen the mutual benefit in that. It's important to me, I am unabashedly an economic developer. I love jobs. And I think it's really important to us to see how many of our young people graduate and do not come back here because there's not really anything for them. And I was reading a big article about San Luis Obispo this last week and why they were able to just secure like six moon flights to some really cool places. Alaska Airlines sticks out. They went there because Amazon put 130 jobs in San Luis Obispo, taking advantage of the youthful talent in both marketing and engineering. And I think that that's really important. Those are not distribution jobs, they're not warehouse jobs. Those are well-paying jobs, white-collar jobs for the young people that we would like to retain. One thing that I think is really also important, our contract is with the City of Monterey for fire, and we did that for a lot of the reasons that you all talked about in your budget. It made sense to combine with someone else and to work together, and not everybody have a fire chief and all the layers that come with departments. It also gave our fire people the opportunity to be promoted into much better jobs because they were in a bigger organization. But if we can come to an accommodation on moving the fire station to the north side of the airport, I do believe it will give you much better coverage because of mutual aid. Instead of the six, seven minutes that it takes of someone on this side of 218 is having a major problem, as in a stroke or heart attack, the response time could be under three minutes. And I think that is something that your residents would definitely benefit from. So I just want to say, the airport board, someone said to me the other day, "You're like the big Goliath and we're the little David." I don't think so. I think we're a very small airport operation that is struggling to serve the community and to be a good neighbor and to take care of our needs to, in a safe and secure environment for the passengers who go there. It's fair to point out that the FAA pays a little over 90% on each of our major projects, and the local match is paid for by a passenger facility charge, which is a $4.50 little tax on each of your tickets when you fly out of the Monterey Airport. So that's how we come up with our 9.6% on our piece of it, and FAA, with monies that they have collected everywhere, comes in. This is a, you just approved a two-year budget. This is a five-year capital plan, and the total to come into this community over a five-year period is approximately $166 million. This next year, this next fiscal year, would be between the $20 and $30 million range that would come in. If you just use SBA guidelines on a $30 million project, that's 600 full-time jobs that are people that are working and spending money in your community. So for me, it's, I think there's a win here for everybody. I just, we'll have to figure out how to get there, but we're very, very willing to work with you and to see what we can do. I know we've talked about, if we need mitigation, you may have some land that could keep a view shed open. We've talked about creating a, I'm not going to call it a wall, a gated area so that people don't have, so that their concerns are addressed, that they won't have people racing through their community. And we've been very clear that we will not open up that road past where the hangars and the fire station are, so that there will not be access through into Monterey. And the last thing I've got to say is that if you are flying a small plane out of our airport and you use those older hangars that are over near the long-term parking, when they come out and they taxi, they actually taxi across the major runway. And that is one of the big no-no's in airports. So it is one of the things we absolutely have to address. So those 51 hangars that Mike has talked about, it's really important that we get those moved and we get that resolved for the safety of all of us. So I guess our board would ask all of you that you schedule a community meeting sometime within the first couple of weeks of June, and that we can come to some type of a resolution, hopefully by your June council meeting. And we're certainly willing to let you use our boardroom anytime you want. We've got a little more space, not a lot, but a little more, and we've got a little more parking, so we're happy to do that. And I just have to say, it looks pretty good to have all of that cleaned out down below there. I had been by here the other day, but I hadn't parked. So that was, I think, the other good thing that we came up with, which was to move the long-term storage over out of sight, out of mind on airport property where you don't, it would free up your view shed here on 218. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll let Mike answer all the questions.
So council comments, questions?
No, looking forward to the.
I have a question. Have you approached going through Monterey rather than through Delray Oaks?
The access through Monterey will remain. It will remain serving exactly what it serves today. For a number of reasons, we believe that the road to serve the new development belongs on this side. We received public comment that indicates that, and we also believe that from a traffic flow standpoint, it works better to have a split operation like that.
But have you approached Monterey to divert the traffic and all, through Monterey rather than Delray Oaks? Have you approached the City of Monterey?
That was one of the alternatives that was considered during the master plan process. The City was, the City of Monterey, just as the City of Delray Oaks, were involved in those discussions.
Councilmember Lindell, if I might, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this agenda is informational only, so we'll take comment from the airport and the public, but this is the exact kind of dialogue that we'll have at the public board.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to open up for public comment. You're welcome to come up. As a reminder, please state your name and where you live before you, and you have three minutes.
My name is Kathleen Wyberg, and I live at the Oaks Condominiums. And I have, my biggest question was similar to yours, that have you, you already have Airport Road there that can connect easily to that whole north side, and I wonder why that is not a much more cost-effective and feasible way to reach the north side. Do you have any comment on that?
So, public comments are just, we're just receiving your.
No answers to the question.
No answers.
Okay.
That will happen at the workshop.
Okay. I feel that that's kind of an obvious solution to the problem rather than rebuilding the wheel to get to the north side. My comment also is, if all the hangars for small aviation, privately-owned aviation jets and whatnot are going to be moved, I am concerned that they will be all on the north side, if my, that's my understanding. And I, my other comment is, I don't know the incredible process of the SEQA thing, and I'm sure it took a great deal of time and effort, but these 20 trips per day on Garden Delray Road, Delray Gardens, is not even, it's sort of silly. Maybe 20 trips per hour in the daytime. And the 7,000, I realize, as he explained, is just the high number, kind of the highest, the worst they thought it would be. But I think the low of 20 is very low. My observations for the moment.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Ragstow-Pornell, and I'm at 58 Carlton Drive. Good evening, everyone. My comment is, is that I'm wondering about, I delivered flyers to several Rosita residents yesterday, sorry, I have a cramp, and they all, several people said that they would move from Delray Oaks if this road goes through and the construction happens, and I'm wondering what that would do to our property values and the... what that would do to our property values and the city's coffers as far as collecting property taxes. Also, I'm wondering, another question I have is, with 600 jobs, where are the 600 people going to be housed? We're having a housing crisis. I just helped somebody move a mattress the other day, and she was paying $1,600 a month rent for a shack in Seaside. So, that is another question. Another question is, I understand that the airport does not have the water for this project, so I would like to know the answers to that question. And I have lots of questions, so I'm looking forward to the workshop. Thank you.
Katie Krieger, Street Quendale. The thing that's worrying me a little is the rush. That never, I don't understand why the big rush. I feel like we need to have some time to reflect and think, and so I'm really concerned about this, that we have to get the first meeting done at a certain time, and we have to have another one, and we need to expedite the process. This is the future of our city, not just in the next five years or six years, but the next 20, 30, 40 years. And I think for us to move with anything but very, very deliberate, thoughtful, reflective, a reflective approach to this is to really put us at risk. So I really ask that we think about that as leaders in our community.
Hello, my name. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Gail Bartow, and I have lived in Delray Oaks since 1974, and have been here a long time. And Highway 218 is not what it used to be. There is a lot more traffic there than there ever was before. And just getting, you know, pulling out and trying to make the turn to go to Fremont Street or the other way, it, I sit there, I come down Via Verdi, and I sit there a long time waiting to make that turn often. And we already have Laguna Seca things where they're going out off of 218 and shuffling people out to Laguna Seca. And now we're talking about South Boundary Road, possible development out there. All these things are going to bring more traffic to 218. So I think we need to think long and hard about having a new road that puts more people onto that highway. And I also noticed, just in that letter, I was looking at it as you were reading it, that in the general plan for Delray Oaks, there was a very strong statement, "We do not ever want to have a road prepared to the airport." And I think that was put in there for a reason.
Jim, stand up, stand in line.
Carol Kaplan, Five Altus Circle. I've lived in Delray Oaks for over 40 years. I too am very concerned about additional traffic on 218. I find it very hard to make a left or a right turn. I'm also concerned about an expedited process, that a decision would be made in one month seems ridiculous, when this will impact our city for the foreseeable future. I think we need to take a long time to think and get all Delray Oaks residents' opinions about this. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
I don't know all the details of this whole project.
Who are you?
I'm a pilot at a long time, oh, Jim Vanderzwaan, I'm a resident here at Carlton in Delray Oaks.
Thank you.
A long-time pilot and having flown into the Monterey Airport, still questioning the validity of what the FAA is considering a problem when nothing has ever existed to be a problem there. That apron is plenty wide enough, planes have taken off and landed there all the time. I think they're more concerned about enabling going from Cat 3 to Cat 2 approaches in the middle of the night, so planes can't land when the fog is into Monterey. But it's spending an awful lot of money to move this wonderful airport terminal that has served us for many, many years, and reconfigure all this and move all these hangars. So I really question the validity of the whole project to begin with. Given that it's already decided that they need to do that, they can do it. There's not a lot of people going to airport hangars every day, so you're not going to have a lot of flow traffic. But I'm more concerned about what's going to happen in the future. This is like kind of opening the door and a can of worms. You're going to build a few hangars, you're going to have a fire station, and we're going to open the road, and then all of a sudden they're going to build a business park out there. And all of a sudden, you're going to have 500, 600 cars moving through. The simple fact of the matter is, in the 35 years that I've lived on the central coast, the only way to reach the Monterey Peninsula is on a one-lane road. And until that is proven to be different in the way that we can adopt a flow of traffic, including Highway 68 and 218, which are one-lane roads in each direction, adding that much more flow is just an exercise in futility. All you're going to do is clog the system more. And if that's really that necessary to do now, I'd be really concerned to say, if that's all you're going to build is hangars out there and a fire station and a limited amount of traffic, we can probably live with it. But I would like to see some assurance that that's where it stops, because I look at what happened around Watsonville, the airport there, and even build a hospital at the end of the runway, not too smart in my thinking. And the same thing has happened in Salinas. They've been building all the way around the airport, and pretty soon they're going to be building on the east side. So all of that has to be factored in the long term. The simple fact of the matter is, until we widen the roads around here or have some alternative highway, freeway access between Highway 1 and 101, that will relieve some of the effort for all the people that service this community on this side that go back into the valley, I don't see that this as a viable option. I don't think we need to increase the traffic, given all the other things about Laguna Seca and Boundary Road and all that. I think adding one more road in there and then doing development on airport property is not a reasonable thing to think about. That's my opinion.
Monty Ryman, Vesant Ridge Road. I have two questions. When the road is, the road that you're proposing coming down is going to be located probably near the most densely populated section of Delray Oaks. The apartments, the condominium complex, there's probably about 150 condominiums there. And secondly, if you're going to be changing all these hangars to the other side, to the north side, will this change the routes? Will this change where they take off and where they come in? Because as of now, where I live in the Oaks, the planes are coming in, it's very quiet. But if you change all the runways and they're, and we are getting the takeoff instead of the, instead of the coming in, we're going to have an awful lot of noise on top of a lot more traffic and pollution. So that's my comment on it.
I'm Helen Birdsong. I live at the Oaks. I don't understand, I understand the airport's rush because they've got an opportunity to get money to be able to do that, but that isn't our problem. That's their issue, not ours. And they can get it next year, and the year after, and the year after. So to push it through in a month because they've got a budget crisis or deadline really is of no concern, or shouldn't be, to this city. They used to have a road in, out to Monterey or in from Monterey, somebody told me, that the Monterey people were able to get it closed. Why isn't that road being reconsidered, to be reopened? But I think, I agree with everybody, I think we have to take our time over this. We're not in a budget crisis, we're not saying, somebody's not saying to us, there's X amount of money. There's 600 jobs, I don't know where they're going to come from, but most people don't ride share. So that's 600 cars straight away.
Hi, Jim Clark, 988 Via Verde, Delray Oaks. One thing I get from looking at this is, A, how open and transparent the city council is attempting to be in this process, B, that you're scheduling a meeting so that everybody that cares or wants to know about this can hear about it and can be involved in it, so there shouldn't be any lack of interpret, lack of information getting out to people. And, three, there seems to be a real, somewhat of a miscommunication or something that somebody heard that I didn't hear, because I know this process has taken at least seven years to do all these studies and all this planning, and it's been brought before the city council or at least talked about in the general pan over the last year. So there isn't, maybe the federal government is putting some kind of screws to the airport, but I don't think it's the airport trying to put screws to Delray Oaks. And, fourth or fifth or wherever I am, I'm just really glad I'm not sitting there and get to deal with this. I'm glad we're looking at a bunch of highly experienced, educated people that are going to have the opportunity to look at this and represent us to do this. And even from the gentleman that represented from the airport, I'm obviously a highly educated guy and is not trying to, you know, I don't think he's going to make a buck off of this. So I know that with all the give and take that happens between the city and, thank God, you know, our fighter chief right, that police chief right back there is a, sorry, I know that was a huge insult, man. I take that back. You know, it was a heck of a contribution from the fire department, so, from the airport, so I just want to make sure that we keep the good things going. So that's just all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Frederica Jones, 8 Hillwell Place. I would just ask the city council and the planning commission that you not take the approach that just because it's over at the Oaks, that if you're living over on this side, that it doesn't matter what's happening over here to you because it's happening over there. I was at a recent presentation where there was a proposal made for a business to expand and open up Rosita Road for customers to come in and make their purchases, and there was individuals that were opposing the growth and the opening of that road because of the noise and the traffic and things that it brought in to that business. And it was very much a concern of those individuals and wanted to express their concern, basically not in my backyard. So I'm asking that if you're a council member, that you're living there as well, or if you're a council member that lives here or here, that you take all of us as a community and not just, oh, well, that's not my area, so I don't care what happens there. Because you are representing all of us. It's not just on Rosita Road or Via Verdi Road or on Portola. You're voted in collectively by all of us. And I hope that you are all looking at this as a community for us and not just because you don't want it on your street. Because if we're going to expand and you're not wanting the growth because of the more cars that you're coming in, then why would you consider opening up this road for the increase and subjecting the Oaks or that community that's living there now to things that you don't even want on your street? Thank you.
Thanks, Frederica. Mr. Graham.
I'm not famous, so. I am a concerned resident of Delray Oaks. I have two homes here in a commercial building. I'm probably firsthand at this situation that's coming about. I have a home right on Rosita, which these hangars will be put right behind my house. And then I have the shop down here that I've noticed that since some other businesses opened up down there, there is absolutely no parking on that street. It is totally full. There is, you come out of there at 5:00 at night, you might sit a half hour trying to get onto 218. So from that point, in the morning time when I get there, the traffic's already started on 218, and that's at 6:00 in the morning. I'm down there at 6:00, I see everything that goes on. There is a lot of traffic on Delray Gardens. People might not think it because they're not there seeing, but I'm there every day on the corner, and I see them coming in and out. There's been a number of accidents right there. When you come out of Garden Road onto 218, there's a turn lane, and cars have pulled out there and there's a person turning in. And when they come in, they don't see each other. I had a customer that came in and wanted an estimate on his BMW. He said, "I've never been in an accident." I said, "That's great." He said, "I got a little scratch on my bumper." So I gave him an estimate. He left, turned right around, come right back in the shop with his whole front end of his car blown out. Tow truck, it turned into that turn lane, he didn't see it, pulled out, tow truck hit him. So, I mean, it's good for me because I got the truck in. But I just want everybody to realize that there's a safety issue that really has to be addressed, especially on traffic. Because there is times when the car people are in town, that road is nonstop. And people are trying to get out fast. They have that turn lane, that merge lane, and what they do is they come out and get in that merge lane and they stop. I'm guilty of that because the cars are coming fast. And they come up there and you can't merge into that merge lane onto 218. And I'm just, I'm surprised there hasn't been some more accidents there that haven't already occurred. But if we put more traffic, that possibility is going to be there. I just want to put my input. That's it.
Hello, I'm the other half. And Carol Graham, and we have, of course, two houses in Delray Oaks and our body shop. And my concern would be, if this did go through, there's a consideration that there would be a stoplight there at Delray Gardens because of what he's saying. And the other concern would be on our street, Delray Oaks. It would be the noise. I'm not against it because I think you guys will make a good decision and really study it, so I'm not for and I'm not against. But the noise, I know over in, by the fairgrounds, the airport put in windows for all of the houses over there to keep the noise down. And on Rosita Road, we get a lot of the noise also, but they never considered doing that for our, our houses on Delray Oaks and on Rosita. But my only concern would be the noise. And I know we have all the bushes there now, and then you have the fire lane there, and I don't know if it's on the other side of that, that this would be, you know, the buildings would be, but you would want to take that in consideration for the people living on Delray Oaks, the noise, which, that can, you know, be taken care of with how you're building it and where, how far it is from our, our street. And, but mainly the stoplight. If that came through, I think there would have to be a consideration for a stoplight there. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Hi, my name's Claudia, I'm from Rosita Road. And I moved there in 1960 with my family, and I live there now. I'm concerned about the whole thing, traffic and, and all the building back there and the roads. But I was talking to another resident on Rosita Road, and he quoted a line from a movie, and he said, "Build it and they will come." And it's like, yeah, maybe you're saying that that's all you're going to build right now, but that opens up, you know, just possibilities for later on, you know? So that's, that's just one of my. So that's, that's just one of my concerns. Once that road gets in, right now, maybe we'll just have the hangers, but who knows what's going to happen five, 10 years from now? So, thanks.
Any other public comments? All right, we're going to close public comment on that. There's no action on our, on the council behalf at this point. We will let everyone know when the public workshop is, and I hope you all are able to attend and your neighbors. We have one additional item and then we're going to take a quick break before the closed session, so I hope you can stay and help us celebrate the people and the ordinances that we've just passed, and we have a special birthday. So on that note, let's move on to our last new business item, which is to consider an exclusive negotiating agreement for the sale of city-owned properties on the former Ford Ork.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's okay.
The next item on the agenda before you is to describe to the public and to the council the status of a draft exclusive negotiating agreement between the City of Delray Oaks and the Oak Ridge Development Group LLC for the sale of city-owned parcel APN 031191026 on the former Ford Ork. What I'd like to draw your attention to is the map on the, on the screen. See if I can get this to work.
There it goes.
All right. Let me orient the group. This is General Jim Moore Boulevard. This is South Boundary Road. This is the city limit of Delray Oaks, and this is Monterey, City of Monterey. In 2005, the city acquired the totality of these parcels. And this bit here and these two over here. These parcels belong to the regional park districts, though they are in the city limits of Delray Oaks. In 2014, the city sold parcel A here, parcel D, this Y-shaped parcel here, and this parcel known as the Caltrans Rightofway for $3 million to Monterey Peninsula Partners. Parcel A has no current plans for development. Parcel D and the Caltrans Rightofway are an entitled project for the Monument RV Park, which was the project that went through the initiative process in our community for entitlement. And I understand that that was very, very unpopular with, with some of our residents. But that is, it is entitled for, for development on these parcels right here. It's reasonable to, so the parcels that we're discussing tonight as part of this exclusive negotiating agreement are parcel B and parcel C. And I would just highlight that it does not include this parcel south of South Boundary Road, approximately 18 acres of city-owned property. So in 2018, Monterey Peninsula Partners and Three Cedars LLC agreed to become a joint venture. Monterey Peninsula Partners, the partner, or the group that bought the land in 2014 from the city, they partnered with a group known as Three Cedars to form a joint LLC. They're here with us tonight, John Treble and Edward Treble, the, the owners of Three Cedars and the joint venture, venturies with Sean Krangyak and his father Mike's not with us tonight. And so they'll be able to answer any questions the public may have at the end of the presentation here. So Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge Development Group seeks to, to develop parcels B and C in, consistent with the Ford Ork Base Reuse Plan, the city's general plan, including our housing element that is going through a revision and that will be revised by the end of the calendar The uses being considered by, by the development team in discussions with city staff include residential, a mix of residential, light industrial space, as well as some office and some retail. As we discussed in, last month during a discussion about the housing element, there's, there's a significant housing crisis throughout the state. This land may provide some of the solution for at least Delray Oaks' contribution to the regional solution and the statewide solution. And again, as we go through the, the housing element update, starting with the workshop on June 6th, we'll be discussing types of, of development, of affordable housing that's required and where in the city we might put those affordable housing units. And of course, the, the development team would, would be tracking that discussion because it would, it would dictate the type of housing required on, on these parcels. Oak Ridge Development Group proposed to the city that they assume the option agreement that, that exists. And let me back up, I didn't explain that. So at the same time that these parcels were sold, parcel A, parcel D, and the Caltrans Rightofway were sold in 2014, in order to close the deal, and at the time the city was in very, very dire financial straits, an option was offered to the purchaser for the, the option of buying parcel B, parcel C, and at that time, this parcel here. This has since been removed from the discussion and is, is in city control. But there exists a part, an option agreement that is valid through July of 2019 for, for the purchase of parcel B and parcel C for a price of $17 million. The city staff has met, reviewed that proposal, and, and is recommending to council that rather than extending an option agreement, we enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement, which frankly better protects the city and provides more clarity to the developer in terms of what the city's expectations are with regard to SEQA process, financing of public infrastructure and SEQA, and the meeting of various milestones leading up to the potential sale of the property if all those, all those milestones are met. And it's that exclusive negotiating agreement and those deal points that I'll be taking to council in closed session for, for confidential negotiation guidance from the council to me as it relates to approaching our, our development team on that, on that ENA exclusive negotiating agreement. But I want to have this discussion in, in open forum so that, so the public's aware it's happening, number one. Public can ask questions of, of me and of David Zinder is here, who is our economic development consultant, again, our, and Erin Harwin is here from Denise Duffy and Associates, which is our, our contract planning consultant, as well as potentially any questions of, of our, our development partners prior to going into closed session. And so I think I'll stop there, Mayor, and, and answer any questions the council or the public may have.
Any questions? No? No? Let's go to public comment.
I voiced my opinion on that subject before. I'm not in favor of selling property off. And for me, I think it would be viseous to take a lease option. If you do sell it, put some restrictions on or some time limits when it has to be built out. Because, you know, you buy the property, you can let it sit for 20 years and nothing happens. And we go through the money and then we are, again, nothing. The property is gone, everything will be gone. So that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Uwankstel Cronin at 58 Corleton Drive. Hello again. My question is, is this development going to include affordable housing to address the housing crisis? And I would love to know the answer to that question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathy Anderson, the person that was sitting in the beginning with me, she says, "Do you live in Delray Oaks?" And I want to share with you, I have property in Seaside and I live off the Salinas Highway and I'm down this road every day though, and I shop at Safeway and do business with Delray Oaks and have many friends here. I've been following this property on Ford Ork and I'm very supportive of you going forward with this developer. And the reason why, you had a developer before that wasn't a good developer and it hung you guys up for quite some time, and I probably, I would think, is, was very costly. And I don't want Delray Oaks to miss their opportunity as the other cities are developing their Ford Ork property. I'm sure Monterey's going to do theirs. If you've been obviously following it, you know Marina and Seaside. So I'm just hoping that, don't miss this opportunity. It sounds like you have a reputable developer and to go forward. And there is a statewide cry for affordable housing and this will give you the reason, the opportunity to do it. So I support this developer and I hope after all those years of waiting for something to, to, that was reputable and, and good folks, I think these are it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other public comment? I guess we're done. Oh, sorry.
It's Helen Bird's song again. How many acres is it?
265-ish.
Go back and check. 235. Maybe it's 235 acres.
The two that we're talking about.
Not that I'm a valuer or a surveyor or anything. It seems awfully inexpensive for that much property. Just, you know, when you look around at what people pay for little, I know it's, we're not Carmel, but when you look around what people pay for pieces of property, it seems awfully cheap.
Thanks, Helen.
Katie, please. I have two thoughts. One thought is the longer we hold on to that property, the more valuable it's going to be. So that's just a thought. But I think the bigger thing for me is way back in 1964, when I was born in the Santa Clara Valley, it was a very, very different place. And it's really grown, you know? And then there was San Jose Express, or, excuse me, Capital Expressway and East Ridge Mall and, you know, Alvin and the Expressway was expanded and, you know, all these things. And they've expanded what used to be Valley Fair three different times. And it's extremely congested. And it used to be called the Valley of the Hearts to Light, and there were a lot of orchards and open spaces and great things for families and animals and, you know, all sorts of things that were nice for the eye. And I think they could have done a lot better job of expanding and perhaps they're an example of maybe not the best. But I'm really concerned about how we build and what we do. And I think we just need to be very, very mindful of what we do. I'm really happy with the direction of Cannabis in the City. I think that's providing us some good revenue. And I understand that the cannabis people really like working with our city, and I think that might be something that really helps us be viable. But it's really hard to think about giving these big options on these big parcels without really having some specifics, more mini gritty specifics than just some houses. And I just, I mean, we live in a really beautiful place and those open spaces are going away. And I think there needs to be some way of finding some kind of balance. Because we're making some really important decisions for our local habitat and for the greater fight against climate change. So, you know, I ask you to really be mindful about these things. We're talking about two big things with the airport, you know, the paving over of open ground that absorbs rain runoff. And we know that as temperatures are rising, that sometimes there's a lot heavier rains. You know, I just think we need to really have a lot of public input before we make decisions and that we need to go slow.
Thanks, Katie. Anyone else like to get up and public comment? All right, on that.
Just a few remarks.
Please.
Thank you, everyone, for the great comments all around. Just a few thoughts as we get close to wrapping up and going to closed session. The exclusive negotiating agreement, which will become public at some point after, I mean, it does have to be negotiated, is, sets a framework that, at the end of which, there's the potential sale of the property, not the beginning. And, and in order to get to that sale, certain milestones have to be reached, certain public outreach has to happen, public input has to be taken, environmental review has to be conducted. There, I suspect there will be varied and multiple, there's no suspect about it, I know, there will be varied and multiple venues for, for thoughtful input to the city staff, the city council, and, and the development team as we, as we move forward, if we move forward, if the council's desires to move forward. Number one. Number two, in our, in our very sort of initial discussions, there's a very, there is a non-trivial amount of that space that will remain open. And that will come, come out as we, as we discuss this and it takes more shape. But just in the, in the very conceptual form, you know, again, out of that 235 acres, a significant amount of that acreage remains undeveloped.
Is the public access to that?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, but all, again, all of that will, will unfold, so I, and, and none of it will happen behind, you know, without your input. So while there is a right place for, for confidential negotiations on price and terms, there's also legal process for public input. And, and the discussions with this development team, they're, they're experienced in that process in the state of California, which is unique in those processes. And so I just wanted to kind of lay that out to, to the group as we, as we move forward because I, I appreciate and hear everything you're saying.
But we're not doing anything with it.
No, so, so the reason this is an action item is I just wanted to be clear that, that we are going to go to closed session, I'm going to ask for a decision in closed session to move forward.
So our next item is correspondence from Dennis Allian. Dennis, as you may know, is a former city council member for many, many, many years. And he offered to be on the board of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District just to continue doing that for us. So he is providing us with an update on, on that board meeting. But before you go, we're going to, we're going to have cake. So what I'd like to do is close, can I close? Okay, so I'd like to close for closed session. We can all come out and have a piece of cake with you, and then we'll come back into closed session. So thank you. This is your reward for, for hanging with us. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with regard to the closed session item. An update was provided to the council, a direction was given to staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you.
All right.
Ellen?